Yes, you guys are all missing the first game of the World Series. The first item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. It's designed text that like the handling of limited routine matters by city council. be removed prior to council's vote.
...are zone commercial highway. The proposed lot one will be 2.7 acres and lot two will be .0865 acres. Both lots exceed the minimum size requirements for commercial zoning. The existing utility easements are marked on the plat and no new easements are proposed. The plat, the replat meets condition nine of our land use code in section 6.09 to relocate or vacate one or more lot lines between adjacent lots. The amended plat meets this criteria and the proposal will vacate the lot line between adjacent lots. All right. There were some comments on this plat primarily with the dedication blocks. We have, Maverick has resubmitted a plat with the appropriate dedication blocks on there. There was also a comment about right-of-way being dedicated to the city. That is not occurring, so there's been no change on the boundaries nor has there been a right-of-way easement dedication on the plat. So that comment is no longer relevant. So staff does recommend approval. They have met the requirements for amending their plat.
All right, council, questions?
I'll have any.
All right, I will open this up for public hearing on amending the plat for the Maverick Cortez subdivision. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this? Public hearing closed. May I have an amendment or a motion?
Amendment to the motion.
Or a term or something.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 27, Series 2017, approving the amended plat for the Maverick Cortez subdivision as submitted by authorized Representative Reeve and Associates, Inc., for owner Maverick, Inc.
Second.
Miller.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye.
So how soon will you start? Are you ready to go?
We're ready.
Okay, good. And how soon are you expecting to be finished?
Well, we're hoping before the end of the year.
Okay.
We do well.
Good. Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Keep that.
Okay, good deal. Great.
You have a question.
All right. All right. Eric.
I was just gonna let me do this. Um, yes, before you is the ordinance for the Public Art Advisory Committee for the City of Cortez. This is, the ordinance is unchanged from the first, what was first presented two weeks ago at council on October 10th. We're excited to get going and get this county, get this committee moving forward. So if you have any questions for me?
I don't have any.
No questions? Okay.
It's kind of spelled out pretty good on it.
You are?
It's spelled out good. I was gonna say, everything's spelled out good on it, so.
All right, I will open it up for a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against the formation of a Public Art Advisory Committee for the city? Get your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Sonia Rochko and I live in Cortez on Maple Street. And I'm here in support of the Public Arts Advisory Committee. First of all, with thank yous to Chris Burkett for his graciousness in all of this, and I'm glad he gets to fly fish a little more now. So, and also to the city council for assigning Eric to us because it has been very smooth and a wonderful process and very long. I think this is the ninth month, sort of like having a baby. And I would also like to-
I'm not going there.
-thank Heidi Brinker who's, who has been in this process with us the whole time. And it's been really nice to have the input that she brings as a new resident, a recent resident in Cortez. The city council is making a transformative decision by supporting the proposed Professional Public Arts Advisory Committee. While it can operate as a filter for the council and the city and an educative tool for the artists, it gives credence to the importance of audience development as well as respect for the arts and artists. It offers current and future, local and regional residents and tourists an opportunity to share equally in the responsibilities of the arts while the arts community works to correct the status of the arts as a decoration, decoration in Cortez and establish ourselves as the professional reflective cultural contributors we are. This mutual effort expands an opening to grow economic markets and a robust revenue stream that will in turn elevate the quality of life in Cortez. So thank you in advance. I also have a very short statement from Brandon at Stonefish, Raymond Schubert, the owner of Stonefish, who can't come because he's the owner of Stonefish and he's always there. So he's been following this very closely. He is also a trained opera singer and he supports the arts at Stonefish. And he wanted you to know that the public arts discussion, philosophy, and organizational work that has been accomplished during the last nine months on behalf of the artists in our community is to be commended. Our city will benefit, but more so, our children will grow to expect that arts are an integral, integral measure of living well, no matter where they settle as adults later in their lives. I see this moment, he says, in Cortez as an opportunity to elevate public arts, increase access for the arts community to higher standards of business practices while gracing the city with a broad range of arts experiences available in larger urban areas and more progressive rural communities. And he was obviously speaking in support of it too. And if you have any questions, Heidi and I are here with Eric to answer them.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against? Okay. Is the public hearing? There are no other questions, council? May I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve on final reading, Ordinance Number 1232, Series 2017, creating a Public Art Advisory Committee for the City of Cortez, Colorado.
Second.
Miller.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye.
All right. Be anxious to hear what you guys, what your, what your first project is. Do you have a first, do you have? Eric, do you have something that you guys are already thinking about starting to work on?
Um, you know, I think our first steps are gonna be getting committee members going and then we have some ideas. Uh, you know, there, there is still the, the tree in Monizuma Park that we'd like to find some way to address. But, but our first and foremost issue will be addressing the display of public art in City Hall. We want to get that all buttoned up before we move forward with other things and then, but I don't, I feel like we'll be able to wrap that up pretty quickly.
Good.
So, yeah.
Okay, great. Well, we'll look forward to hearing you come back and share what you guys are doing. Thank you. Thank you, thanks for everybody's participation and support of this. All right, we have no unfinished business, so moving on to new business. Resolution Number 22, Series 2017, uh, the application of the GOCO grant for the park property, um, project. Chris.
Good evening. Yep, here we go on another GOCO grant. The city has made an offer to the school district to purchase the old MCHS high school site and we're hoping to receive money from GOCO to help the city purchase that. One of the requirements of a GOCO grant is a resolution from the city stating that they wish to apply for a grant and if they receive it, the amount of the monies that would be applied for, which were $169,276 total project, is expected to be $307,984. We'd be purchasing full 14 acres. Eleven acres of that would go towards a construction of a new park. The other three acres hopefully would be able to sell to the housing authority where they could build some low-income housing right next to the park and it would make just a tremendous project, I believe, for the entire city. One of the biggest aspects that was looked at is that this project really had its origins back with the Parks Recreation Advisory Board when they redid their master plan last year. Community members came to the meeting and some of the comments that came through in the survey that went out over the internet came back that they would like the city to purchase that property and do something with it and that kind of helped get things going and rolling. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, you do have the resolution in front of you to approve and then also approve a support, a letter of support signed by the mayor to go to GOCO.
And just so council knows, the letter of support has just been tweaked slightly. There were just some, there were just some typos and just some wording, but it basically says exactly the same thing that you see there, which is-
Basically what it comes down to is GOCO wants to know that when an organization like Parks Recreation is applying for a grant, that the city councils or town boards are aware that their department is applying. But currently they've been caught a couple of times, but wait a minute, we don't want it, we should know what's happening. So by passing the resolution and a letter of support, then there are problems that the city's behind the hope of the project proposed.
Questions, council? I have none.
I don't have any.
All right. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 22, Series 2017, authorize on staff to apply for a GOCO grant for the park property, O-MCHS, and authorize the mayor to sign the letter for support for this project.
I second. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye.
All right, one more step. Thanks, thanks, Chris. All right. The next item is transfer of hotel restaurant liquor license for Merch Masala formerly Nero's Restaurant.
What?
I haven't heard it just pronounced.
Is it, is it Merch Masala? Is that correct?
Yes.
What?
Am I right?
Well, actually it's Merly LLC will be the liquor license holder. What we have here, folks, is Nero's essentially has sold to Merly LLC. Bharat Patel is here, he is the owner and the, he signed also as the manager. This is a no public hearing type of transfer. It happens when someone purchases an existing restaurant bar. And so staff has reviewed the application. Everything is in place, everything looks wonderful. Staff recommends approval of the transfer of ownership in a new liquor license for Merly LLC.
Would you like to step to the podium and say a few words or you still want us to vote?
My instructions from the gentlemen were they would love you to just vote. They didn't care.
Okay. Okay. We can just vote. All right, may I, if there, if there are no questions, council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of the hotel and restaurant liquor license for Nero's Restaurant to Merly LLC, DBA Merch Masala, to be located at 303 West Main Street, Cortez.
Second.
Lucero.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
When will you be opening?
November 10th.
November 10th? Okay. Well, we eagerly look forward to.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Tim's buying.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Good night.
Good night. All right, the bid for the HVAC replacement system at the rec center.
Dean. Yep, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Yeah, I'm over here. On May 9th, 2017, City Council approved Phase Two design for the rec center HVAC replacement project and that was conducted by ME and E Engineering out of Durango. They provided us with the matrix on April 28th, which estimated the HVAC replacement cost to be $1,368,670. FCI, contract, contract, isn't contractor, I think it's Constructors Incorporated submitted a bid for both the base bid and alternate bid one for a total cost of $1,285,000. Work for the base bid is anticipated to begin on April 2nd, 2018 and be completed by May 28th. I think within that we would be, we would be closed for equivalent of a week, you know, during that time and then we'll be working around the construction the rest of the time. And then work for alternate base bid is anticipated to begin on June 6th, 2018 and be completed by July 8th of 2018. And that, that alternate base bid would include the HVAC units for the aquatics area. So basically, we've been informed that we have to get more detail, but we'd be closed probably up to about four weeks for the swimming pool. So our thought is at least have the outdoor pool open and have other options for our patrons and potentially to where the membership or, you know, pass holders, we'd have to work that out, would get access to the outdoor pool use for their membership. So the base bid would replace six HVAC units and then the alternate base bid would replace two units that would be adjacent to the fitness area and they would be relocated on the top of the aquatics area. So that has to be reinforced, but that gives us 1,600 square feet of additional space for upstairs for fitness area. And I think it's a great move. We've, I think, discussed this with council and you've thought the same way about it as well. Any questions?
Dean, when they, when they close that rec center down, is it that one week period that you mentioned? Is it gonna close the entire rec center or is it just parts of the rec center?
I think for like the first base or the first phase of this, it will, I, I would believe it'd be for the whole rec center because they're gonna have to have cranes mobilized on the top and any work involving cranes. It's, it's just a safety concern for patrons. So it would be more than likely the whole rec center. You know, it's still about a four-week project, but the other aspects of it, when they don't have the cranes up there, we could, we'll have to just be working patrons through, you know, may not be the front door all the time where their access will be directly into the rec center. And those are things we'll just have to work through and, but we're, our goal obviously is to have that rec center open as much as possible that, you know, within safety reason to do so.
The reason I say that, Dean, 'cause we, we fixed the floors recently on the showers. They look awesome, beautiful, really nice.
Thanks.
A lot of those retired folks, they really look forward, including myself. We look forward to going there every morning.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna do what we can. I think it's the cranes that really will be the key thing of taking the old HVAC systems off and putting on the new ones and that, I think, if, if I understand it correctly, takes about a week to do that process.
Well, at least it will be in the summer or the spring, so you guys-
Yeah, at least, hopefully that, depending on-
Put your stationary bikes out on the, on the walkway at the entrance.
How many bids did you get, Dean?
We, we, Whorley, we ended up with two, two bids and then through a portion of that process, one of the bidders ended up withdrawing, so we ended up just with the FCI bid when it was all said and done. But it was, you know, as you can see, within the engineer's estimate, so we felt it was a reasonable, reasonable bid.
Little high.
Yeah, HVACs aren't cheap, Whorley.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I don't have any.
May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion aborting the bid to FCI Constructors, Inc., in the amount of $1,285,000 for the base bid of the alternate bid one for the Cortez Rec Center 2018 HBAC replacement.
Second.
Lucero.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Archibek.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
And I just want to second Bob's comment. I was, I was at the rec center today and took a look at those floors. They are a great improvement in the locker rooms of what they were.
Well, I want to give a lot of credit to, to Joy McHenry, our facility supervisor, and Dan Jones and the rest of the staff there. They, they really did, not only with the floors, but the cleaning of the facility. I mean, there was literally since the facility was open in 2004, dusting that had never happened because we've never closed the entire facility. And they, everybody rolled up their sleeves and was a part of the process in cleaning and painting and, I mean, there's fresh coats of paint everywhere in that facility and, you know, the staff really got behind to, to get that place cleaned up and the flooring, though it maybe didn't go perfect, we, I mean, the end result now is where it needs to be and I think it's a good choice for the maintaining of that facility in years to come and, and the product we see now.
Well, I was really glad to see that you replaced the mats every place, including in that area back in the day.
Yeah, the duct, by the duct slide, yeah.
Yeah, it just looks, it's, looks so much nicer and spring cleaning's good.
Yeah.
So, compliments to the staff. All right, may I have a motion?
We did.
We have, did we vote on that?
But I even spend another million dollars.
Or he can only spend one million.
Just one million in a month, okay. Resolution 29, Series 2017, the Colorado Lottery. Lynda.
So I'm gonna just sort of go over Shane's memo since he wasn't able to be here tonight for the record, mostly for the audience, people that may not have the packet. In 1992, voters adopted the Great Outdoors Colorado Amendment to Colorado's Constitution, which directs that lottery profits be used for parks, open space, wildlife, and outdoor recreation purposes. The Lottery Division exists to administer the lottery. The Lottery Division is set to expire in 2018 unless it is extended by the General Assembly. The city has been a recipient of GOCO grants in the past, most recently the pickleball courts and the splash pad at the outdoor pool. Currently, we are participating with the Inspire Coalition, who has applied for a large grant and intend to apply for funds to help acquire the former high school building, the city is. The city also receives direct funding for CTF funds annually, which go towards park capital projects. It is in the city and the state's best interest to continue the operation of the Lottery Division. And Resolution Number 29 supports the reauthorization by the General Assembly of the Colorado Lottery Division in 2018.
Which is obviously something we want to do since we want GOCO grants. Any other questions or amendments, council?
No, that's good.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve Resolution 29, Series 2017, a resolution supporting reauthorization by the General Assembly of the Colorado Lottery Division in 2018.
Second.
Archibek.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Lucero.
Aye.
Sheik.
Aye, thank you.
We have no draft resolutions or ordinance. We don't have any other items of business at this time. If there are any citizens that would like to address council, this is your last chance of the evening.
Last chance, chief.
Last chance. All right, there is no city attorney's report?
No, ma'am.
Since we don't have a city manager here, he can't, he can't provide even a possible update. City Council Committee reports.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Dean got us up right and early last Friday, or last Friday, we were at the Gear Trailhead where Keith Evans, we're gonna, you know, buy a 58 parcel from Keith. And there were some things that were discussed there before we went on a little walk. It was quite a long walk for some of those guys.
It was probably a mile or so, right?
But anyway, we-
How many miles? Five miles?
No, a couple, mile, again mile.
Dean presented a letter of support for the GOCO process in acquisition of the high school property and the advisory board, we were all in favor of that. Then Keith proceeded to take us on a little tour of his 50-acre parcel and, and talked about some trail possibilities and getting a, a straight-line trail from, from one end of the, you know, property to the other and possibility of moving a fence. And we also talked a little bit about coexistence with horses and bikes and that we can live together, but we have to follow certain rules and solutions on this coexistence were presented. Signs were talked, we were talking about signs on trails, especially on the new trails. And it was a, it was a great hike and it was fun. We need to do that more. It was good.
All right.
I was able to make it to the Culture Center meeting. It was long.
Yes.
You've got seven pages.
And the first thing that we really talked about was the financial reports and shock, we don't have quite enough money.
Oh, oh my gosh. I'm amazed.
That's very surprising. So we decided that we really spent a little, little bit of time just talking about some of the things, we need to figure out how to bring in more revenue and maybe spend a little bit less. One of the things that we spent quite a bit of money on was the print advertising and we really didn't see much result from it. And, but the, the good news is we got three new people on the board. There was Eleanor from the gift shop, she took over Jolie's place, and Jedicaiah, who is not Amish.
Cox. Coy, I mean coy.
Yeah. And Brett with One Team. And I think with these guys coming on to it, I think we're gonna be able to fix up the tower and finish it up, actually make it a usable tower, clean up the plaza. And I'm really excited about the fact that we will have some input into social media and do more marketing on social media with drones and all kinds of neat stuff.
With drones, do they?
Yeah, drones and cameras to do the, to highlight the plaza and to look at different activities that we can do down at the Hawkins Preserve to both promote the Hawkins Preserve and to have events.
In the plaza.
Yeah. So, anyway, it was a, it was a good meeting. It was long, it was good.
As long as it's productive. Great.
You know, Kelly with Mysore the Country has been doing a lot of marketing with drones and stuff like that. I mean, she's, she would be a good source to maybe-
Well, Jedicaiah does that, too.
Okay, cool.
And between these guys, I think we're gonna, we're gonna have some new stuff come up.
In Hollywood.
Oh, yeah. Bill Rock is chasing.
Well, it's all in getting the word out, so, great, okay. All right, other committee reports. All right, in that case, just to recap of what we did at the workshop this evening, this was our, our evening to go through grant requests. We reviewed 23 requests from non-profit organizations in this community for city grant funds and made decisions on which grants we would award and the amounts of those and did it in record time. I don't know if that's because we're terribly organized or-
We think we are.
Yeah, we just, we, yeah. We didn't have as many people, you don't have as much talk. Anyway, we, Don Lightenberg will be sending letters out to those organizations that will be recipients and letting them know what they would, so that's always, that's always a good thing. Is there anything else for the good city?
It's all good. Let's go home.
You turn.